Part of this meeting. So we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And I'll start with a roll call of the council members to establish a quorum. Kristen?
Here.
I can't hear you guys. Okay, now I can hear you. Kristen?
Here.
Okay, perfect. Amber?
Here.
Vicky?
Here.
Leanna?
Here.
Tricia?
Here.
Laurel? Here. And Chelsea here. Excellent. It's great to have everyone. And I'll go ahead and read the invocation. "This is our school. You peace dwell here. May be full of contentment. May love abide here. Love of one another, love of our school, and love of life itself. Let us remember that as many hands build the house, so many hearts build a school." All right, that takes us to item 1.4. Are there any agenda modifications?
Chelsea, item 4.7, the pay scale update, we're not ready on that yet, so I'd like to remove it.
Okay, great. We will table item 4.7. Does anybody else have any agenda modifications? Okay. I'm seeing none. That will take us into, excuse me, item 1.5, Audience to address the council. And just a reminder that this is for items that are not specifically listed on the agenda. And anyone wishing to address the council does have three minutes to do so. We have anybody in attendance tonight that wishes to address the council? Okay.
I have a comment.
I'm sorry, who is that?
This is Christina Miller.
Okay, great, Christina. Go ahead. Just a reminder, you have three minutes.
Sure, no problem. I wanted to thank the Charter Council for their willingness to complete site testing. But I also want to request that we reopen the process to being a more transparent process. I feel that perhaps with good intentions, the Charter School Council and wanting to be competitive in achieving a good price kept the parents uninformed in this process and not only didn't publicly notice the closed session meetings properly, but they also discussed items beyond what is allowed to within closed session, which is limited price and terms. And I feel that that process in and of itself, while really well-intended, has created a lot of feelings that the parents aren't being listened to in the process. And so I'm kindly requesting that we take a step back and allow parents and not just be limited to a question session, because it feels very unfair to the parents to be put into that position. But have an open process where we can really look at what's best for our students in moving forward. That's open and transparent. And then my other real quick item is that the closed session agenda tonight wasn't agendized appropriately. It should have referenced Government Code Section 5.7. That section, I think it's four, doesn't have anything to do with closed session processes.
Christine, I appreciate your comment, and I've noted your concern. So thank you very much.
Sure, just so you're aware, it's not agendized appropriately, so it wouldn't be appropriate for you to meet in closed session.
Thank you. All right. So that takes us, if there are no more public or audience members that would like to address the council, that will take us to item 2, the consent agenda. If anyone is ready, I will entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
This is Amber. I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you, Amber, for the motion. Do you have a second? Laurel, I see your hand.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Laurel, for your second. I will call for the vote. Laurel?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Leanna?
Aye.
Vicky?
Aye.
Amber?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
And Chelsea, aye. Excellent. Motion passes. So that takes us now into item 3, Faculty. Sarah, if you could give us the grade level report.
Hi. Sorry, there I am. Um, I think that right now people are feeling like, you know, we're heading into progress reports and parent-teacher conferences, so that's starting to go on our, on the teachers' minds right now of just starting to get prepared for those and making sure all of our grading and things are in order for that process. And had a really great Harvest Festival that a lot of participation, and teachers felt it went really well. I thought it went great. Personally, I had a fun time there, so that was good. And we've had field trips to pumpkin patches and all kinds of things going on throughout the different grades, so. It's good.
That is great. Thanks, Sarah.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions? I love the time of the year when all the field trips start happening and the excitement building up to winter and,
Yes.
Fun, so thank you for sharing. Okay. So that takes us then to item 4, Governance. We'll start with Amber with the Finance Committee report.
Okay, so we had to reduce ADA by 14. So we budgeted at 265, so we're going down to 249. Brings our revenue down 138,000. Expense forecast is approaching 4 million. Above budget by 164K, which is going to be covered by grant funds. Cash is ending the month. Good, but it's going to be lean in like November, December. I get some other notes. I think Susan kind of noted that a lot of the, we're short in kinder. It's like 13 students, I think, is where a lot of that's coming from. So we talked about that a little bit. Also, in the recent years, we've actually had higher enrollment in first grade, so. But we, you know, did kick around a couple ideas and that we're going to be working with marketing and really pushing our kindergarten program. We talked a lot about how the whole harmless, how it's hitting kind of differently in the year, so it sort of makes cash not stabilize. You know, there's sort of an up and down with it, but that overall, we're fine. There's just going to be some months that were like a little bit more lean than other months. Like I noted, November, December, so we'll probably have to do some financing for cash in those months, it's looking like. The grants are just funding later, more like December, January. Let's see. So we'll probably be talking about doing a loan soon. So we also kind of talked about what we're normally funded ADA. It's usually about 15K per student. It's looking more like 17 to 18 this year, just for all the extra grant funding. So that's good, but we'll have to look at the future of how we're going to adjust spending. Let me see. Kind of talked about a lot, so trying to get through my notes here. We approved a new parent member, Ryan. He's the treasurer of Parent Council, so he's now moving over to the Finance Committee, which is great, because we have another parent on there. We kicked around the idea of possibly just reaching out, seeing if a later time would be helpful to some parents, so that we can have more parent involvement in the Finance Committee. Something we're probably going to be bringing to the board soon is, we used to have an Amazon line of credit, and it was really great because we didn't pay any interest on it. Just a revolving credit line, and they're ending that program through Amazon. So we're going to be looking at like three different options to bring to the board, because we definitely need something like, some sort of credit line for ordering. We order quite a bit of supplies, and Maggie really doesn't want to have to be ordering from different suppliers. That can get a little bit messy with your finances, so we're going to look into like some government credit cards, low interest rate. I mean, it'd be paid off monthly, so sort of kicked around ideas about that. And also, we approved to send to the board some Waldorf, Waldorf-based training for the faculty for behavioral. So that was really good. Looks like that's about it? Yeah, it was a full meeting, so. That was all for the Finance Committee. If anyone has any questions.
Great, thank you for that, Amber. Does anybody have questions for Amber, comments about what she shared from the Finance Committee?
Actually, just to clarify, it was just kinders, about the TK count, and that, or is that total?
I don't know what the breakdown is, but I think that's just total, right? Susan, 13 total for the kinder program? We don't know if it's pre-K or?
Yeah, no.
No.
Pre-K, K program.
It's the pre-K, K program.
It excludes the two class.
Oh, two together. Yeah, so I don't know. I'm not sure.
That's where our deficit is in our.
Okay. Yeah, so.
We were waitlisted when we started, though, right?
We were waitlisted in May, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, the upside of that was that we do, we have been having higher enrollment at first grade the last couple of years, so. It's just been a switch. But we did talk about like marketing, and we looked at the, I looked over like our webpage and, you know, maybe pushing our kinder program a little bit more on the front page of our webpage. And just different ideas, since it's kind of a sustainable school committee as well, so we did kind of kick around stuff like that. Ryan and I both noted that, you know, we know of parents personally that Thursdays are kind of a challenge with, you know, so we talked about doing extended days for that. Susan brought up extending our morning drop-off hours to kind of be more in line with some of the other schools, if that's possible, but that's going to be, whether we can do it like through grants and things, so. I'm sure that's ongoing. We'll continue to talk about that. We talk about that in that committee all the time, since it's sustainable schools.
I'd just like to add, I am a family. Look, Garrett was here for the Harvest Festival. He was helping with the music. And he fell in love with our school, and so I know that may fair is more of our community, but maybe to at least like more family members or a little bit because that play and the production, it's just so beautiful. It'd be another way to just kind of have to see our community and the things that we put on. And, you know, they're already really interested. We'll probably get them to tour, so. Could be a way, you know, not to push vending and so much, but just a little bit more on like what we do, especially our new ones and activities and the seventh graders and all the face, maybe something we might want to push to break in like a friend or story neighborhood in the future, so just families.
Timing would be good, because it is the time when families who are seriously looking at other schools are doing that. So I'm kind of working with that issue.
Yeah.
And it will be, or whatever, you know.
It is that time when charities get more interest. And also, the kindergarten fair for the district is the first of the November, so. It's a good time to say, hey, let's see what we can do.
Yeah, and we did talk about that, too.
Somewhere in the county, that play is really awesome, and we, the teachers have it there, something like that.
Yeah, we did also talk about the marketing video, having some updates to it for, with less mass, and it was not obviously as much of a concern anymore for parents. So we did, we did talk about that a lot, and that open enrollment starts in December for the district, so pushing it earlier. So, yeah, we had a lot of those conversations.
Okay, and Laurel, I see your hands up. Ashley, I also see that your hand's up. I will hear from the council members first, and then we'll come to you as per protocol, though. I do see, I want to make sure.
I'm wondering if Ashley's was the same. People, as they're speaking, their voices are dropping off, and it's hard to hear them. If people could just speak a little more, a little bit louder.
I will try. Sorry, Laurel.
It is a little, so I can see that. So thanks, guys. I appreciate you helping to speak up. All right, is there anything else from the council on the Finance Committee report? Okay, hearing none. And thank you, Amber. Ashley, you got a comment or question? Okay, so that will now take us into item 4.2, that's the Parent Council Report. Tricia?
Yeah, so Parent Council, they talked a lot about Harvest Festival, some about Harvest Festival, which now has already happened. Talked about having a parent education night again, which we had prior a few years back, and them approving funds to do that. So they're looking into having a few parent nights and maybe even somebody to come and speak to students as well about proper use of social media and things to watch out for, so they're working on that. Talked about doing maybe school-wide fundraisers to bridge the gaps for for cost of field trips. If the class is short, trying to come up with funds as a whole for the school to kind of bridge those gaps if there's shortages. They also talked about the clothing swap, so they're going to try to do a clothing swap once a month, and that will be on the third Thursday of every month. And they're going to start that at 12:30. So people could come in and shop before, they pick up the kids if they wanted, and not just after, when it's kind of a little bit more crazy. Also talked about the Walk into Winter, and I think that they chose December 10th as the date, which is a Saturday. So there was a subcommittee set up to start planning that, so they're working on what that will look like. So everybody was excited for that to come back. And they also talked about doing a closed Facebook group for the school. So it would be more where you'd have to be part of the school to be part of that Facebook group to communicate with, with other people within the school. So just having a conversation on if that's something that can be done and facilitated. And oh, they talked about the music room beautification, so they approved some money to do some decor decorations in the music room. Yeah, so, so yeah, so that was pretty much our council's report.
Thank you very much.
That's great. Thank you, Tricia. Some really good things going on in Parent Council, so I appreciate that. Does anybody have any questions for Tricia?
Oh, a call. As I was part of the Harvest Festival Committee, it was just nice to see that so many parents from PC as well in there, and it was just really a collaborative, great year to put it on. It was a different program, two called Slacks, it was like more like messaging, so maybe we'll make these years sort of fall into the ether.
Yeah.
And I think just things just were really so, they said, just, yeah, good, good year. I think they're off to a really good start.
Good.
All right, thank you. That's great. Okay, well, that takes us then into item, where are we at, 4.3, the Equity and Inclusion Task Force Report. Susan?
Really have no new report. Our meeting of three is next Monday.
Okay.
Do they meet once a month or every Monday?
Once a month.
Okay. Is it the first Monday?
It is the last Monday, I think, or at least Monday.
Do we still have seats needed?
Yes.
All right. That then takes us into item 4.4, the COVID-19 response. Is there anything additional or new for that, Susan?
We have continued to have, we had a report today in one of the rates of exposure, pretty much down to one to two a month now. And I do know that the, according to the news this morning, the governor is planning to eliminate the emergency situation in February, so.
Okay, well, thank you for that update. Does anybody have any questions on the COVID-19 response update? Okay. That takes us then into item 4.5, to appoint the B O C C Secretary. For those of you who were here last, last meeting, you're aware. For those of you who weren't able to be at our last meeting, we filled all of the council positions with the exception of the Charter Council Secretary. Tricia remained on until this meeting for us. But we do need to nominate and appoint somebody to do that. I would like to nominate if she will accept Leanna to be the Blue Oak Charter Council Secretary.
Sure. So yes, okay.
But if anyone else also has a nomination, and we do put it to a vote, so we can have multiple nominees. If not, we could have a second for Leanna's nomination.
I'll second Leanna's nomination.
Thank you, Vicky, for the second. And thank you, Leanna, for being willing to step into this role. Okay, well, with that, because I have the nomination and Vicky has the second, we will go ahead and call for the vote for Leanna to assume the role as the Blue Oak Charter Council Secretary. Laurel? I see a hand up.
Aye.
Thank you, Laurel. Tricia?
Aye.
Leanna?
Oh, aye.
Vicky?
Aye.
Amber?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
And Chelsea, aye. Great. Well, motion passes. Congratulations, Leanna, and thank you for being willing to serve in this capacity. Okay, moving right along to item 4.6. Oh, I guess I was incorrect. We had two positions that we needed to establish. Here we are at item 4.6, to establish the Parent Council Liaison.
So this is Tricia, and Kristen said she was interested in doing that, so I would nominate her, unless somebody else is interested. Second, Kristen.
I accept.
Great. Is there anyone else who's interested in that position? That would also like to nominate? Seeing none. And then, that was Tricia with the nomination. Was that Leanna with the second?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, then we have the nomination on the table. I will call for the vote. Laurel?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Leanna?
Aye.
Vicky?
Aye.
Amber?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
And Chelsea, aye. All right, that will take us now to, oh, item 4.7 has been tabled, so that will take us into item 4.8, to approve an additional Blue Oak Finance Committee member.
You can't do this more? Oh, talk about it in here. Yeah, yeah, I am just kidding.
Okay, and so that's Ryan that you spoke of. Is that correct, Amber?
Yeah.
Okay, and so I assume that this is at the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Yes, it is.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve Ryan Sanders as a parent representative? I would like to ask that it's corrected, because it says Parent Council Representative, but it's on the Finance Committee, so I think it should just be Parent Representative.
This is Kristen, and I move to approve, I motion to approve additional UFC member Ryan Sanders.
Great, thank you. Laurel, I see your hand.
Second.
Thank you, Laurel. Then I will go ahead and call for the vote. Laurel?
Aye.
I tried to catch you before you muted, sorry. Tricia?
Aye.
Leanna?
Aye.
Vicky?
Aye.
Amber?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
And Chelsea, aye. Okay, into item 4.9, the Amazon line of credit. I know that was briefly spoken to earlier.
Yes, and this is the information, whether an approval on this one, to go a little more into detail. We do a lot of purchasing for general supplies and variety of things through Amazon. Previously, they have included with our account a line of credit, so they allow us not to pay things off immediately. We have the 30-day notice and so forth. They are eliminating that option, I believe it's in January. So the Finance Committee discussed three options. One is called a Cal Card, which is a card that is limited in how it can be used, and it's specifically for California government agencies. A regular credit card or, and/or a line of credit. And the company that CAM that we're currently borrowing from for cash flow also has a line of credit. So the Finance Committee asked staff to look into those three possibilities and come back. Our currently only thing that we have available is basically the ACH, which is a debit card to our account. We've held to that for a number of years since the pigment report. It's really like we're ready to take on having a credit card, and possibly both a credit card and a line of credit. The line of credit would help us with any cash flow issues. And the credit card then would be for expenses, like when we need to rent a van to go on field trips, things like that.
Okay.
National tonight.
No, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you, Susan, for bringing those to our attention and letting us know that you're looking into those options. And thank you to Amber and the Finance Committee for helping to push that along as well. Does anybody have any questions about the credit options that were presented? Okay, seeing none. That takes us into item 4.10, the Waldorf Professional Development Contract.
So, thank you. So discussing this with my co-chairs and also interviewing the gentleman who has this program. This is Kim John Payne. He's a well-known author in the Waldorf world. Does work both with behavior and with parenting. We are looking, his cost is just slightly over my approval rating of 5,300. We are looking, his cost is just slightly over my approval rating of fifty-three hundred. And we are focusing faculty request on behavior. So it felt like a really good combination to go forward with him. He can work into our Thursday schedules, which will be great. He has a video library. He has podcasts for parenting and, and so a real good level of strength within our Waldorf faculty. They were excited to possibly have him work directly with them. So I wanted to offer this as a contracted service to cover our professional development this year. There is money in our professional development budget.
So just to be clear, this is for professional not for training for teachers or male resources for parents?
It is a trade, it's both. It's a training for teacher, but he also has it's called Simplicity Parenting. So it's a book that he's written. He has a podcast and also other materials and so forth.
Susan, are you looking to entertain and focus tonight?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. I'll add, Tyron, our math specialist, kind of did, kind of looked him up, made sure there was no like laryng, Google, you know, this guy is, you know, not a good idea or and there was nothing like that. And I believe, and one of our other teachers that are in there, they're a great teacher that's on our committee. She also was familiar with him and thought it was great as well. So there was a little bit of feedback from some teachers at the Finance Committee as well.
Okay. So Amber, is this coming to us with the recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Yes, it is.
That's great to hear.
We are, for the rest of the year, under prison for our staff to be trained.
Um, not precisely. There's a schedule.
Okay.
That's scheduled.
So I didn't, I didn't hear Kristen's question. Can you repeat?
About the availability because she said Thursdays and she said there's an actual schedule, which I know our best professional development is as much as almost required is important to have. So I appreciate it being focused on either because that is our mission too. So we talk to them too.
Great, great question too. Thank you. All right. Does anybody else have any questions or comments pertaining to the Waldorf Personal Development Contract? Okay, seeing none. I will entertain a motion to accept the contract that's being presented.
I'll make a motion to accept the contract for integrative student support.
Great. Thank you, Leanna. Do we have a second?
This is Tricia. I'll second.
Tricia will second.
Thank you, Tricia. Vicky, you just got to shout it out. I almost call any. I saw your hand go up, but Tricia beat you to it this time. All right. So we've got Leanna with the motion, Tricia with the second. I'll go ahead and call for the vote. Vicky?
Aye.
Thank you. Laurel?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Leanna?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Amber?
Aye.
And Chelsea, aye.
Okay.
All right. That takes us into item five, the Administration, or five point one, the Executive Director's Report.
Okay, well, first I just want to compliment the community and the parents on the beautiful Harvest Festival that happened last weekend. So really, you know, just the energy and positivity, we're really excited to behold. So very much appreciated that. Riley, Marie and I attended an event in Orville concerning our possible location. Additional location in Orville. So we're continuing to go down that path to see what, what's possible there. And just some really great energy and positivity in that room. It was good to feel that sense of those who are really interested and moving, continuing to move or go forward. We work on the hospital, work on the bridge, so forth. So that was really exciting. I've started my annual classroom official observations, done a couple in the lower grades in the last month. Just reminding me how beautiful the Waldorf program is and how very integrated math, ELA, storytimes, all of those things are really integrated in a way to really, I really would say that students often really don't even know they're learning. They're just so engaged in the process. So I'm very excited. So that'll continue through the year. Maggie and I, this is on a not so fun note. Maggie and I did meet with our healthcare benefits, the people we work with without the broker. We are looking at seven percent, a little more than a seven percent increase in medical costs, benefit costs. There's some changes. To it also a few, so we've asked them to put together the package so it's going to be available for the staff to look at. And then it will come to us in the Finance Committee next month. The don't know. So this is a seven percent increase over what it currently is. We are looking at the marketing piece that we want to do. It is, I think I mentioned earlier that November 8th is the kindergarten roundup date for the district and putting something out and setting up a kindergarten interest day with the kindergarten teachers, probably with the second week in November. And then also reaching out to use our, the funds remaining that we have or some of them remaining that we have alone fern to produce the the interest cards to send out to families. That's one of the things that's recommended for that process. And then the last thing is the Finance Committee just want to continue to push for the three additional family members, hopefully representing some of our, our subgroups. So I'm going to be continuing to reach out. I think one of the things I said at that meeting in the sense is that October meeting is really where the budget for the first time comes together. So that we can seriously look at how we're doing. And that's because our census date is the beginning of October. So that's the day we know what our enrollment officially will be considered for the year. And so that plus we've had about a mid solid month, a month of September of expenses. So we have a good a good understanding of where we are financially. We're doing well right now. And so I am feeling like we can go ahead and and hire a second admin at this point. I had hold held off on that. So, but that's in the budget. The budget still balances. So I feel feeling pretty good about that. And making some adjustments of things that we put in the budget that we both don't need. For example, the subgrids for special ed, we have our own staff on file now for two of the items. So that's a significant adjustment that will be made. So I will be looking at that in the next meeting. So that's my report. Any questions?
Kindergarten roundup, you mean just across the counter? Is it going to be like a fair? I have some job for it. Kind of confused about.
I don't know precisely what the kindergarten, the, the district does. Generally, it's a time where the kids, the kids come and are signed up. Maybe their site or their hearing and tested and some of those kind of things we've done. And so they fill up. I haven't ever done it here. So I'm looking at.
I, yeah, I've been to one. They generally do like a little bit of a testing, like what, what their knowledge is, like, do they know some of their APCs? How far can they count? And the Kinder Teachers are usually there. So it's an introduction to them. So yeah, it's, it's usually like, I don't know, maybe thirty minutes max. And it's just very entry and then if parents have questions, but yeah, generally it's just kind of like assess, an assessment of the kindergarten and the parents to meet the Kinder Teachers and maybe just ask some questions about expectations of that age and things like that. So it would, we would probably look a little bit different for our school, but.
It's a show, like many work and the, all the things.
Yeah, mainly talking about showing them the kindergarten, you know, getting them to actually see the site and the kindergarten classrooms.
Yeah, I, I was doing signups for like the day in the kindergarten. Right. They do those.
They do those in January. But just kind of moving it up because this is the time. This is the time that families are really looking for where they want to put their children next year. And so to connect it with when the district is doing that, you know, they're really okay. By the way, we're here too. It's that sort of thing. So. Yeah. So Cheryl, Grant and Kelly Maki already talking about how to arrange it. And Alex is working on the, the cards. And so we can get that going.
Yeah, they also, because I know like for some, for Chico Unified, they kind of find out then like what your needs for like a full day of kindergarten, like you can extend through lunchtime or if it's a shorter time. So we could probably assess some of those needs. And then also since ours is more of a play base, maybe even like first grade teachers, letting them know like, hey, this is what we do in kindergarten, but this will be the expectation, you know, this is where we move into these things in first grade. So because they do kind of let them know what the expectations are going to be for kindergarten. It's our program's a little bit different. But yeah, it's generally only like thirty minutes introduction.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. All right. Does anybody else have any questions or comments regarding Susan's report or the kindergarten roundup or any of those things? Okay. All right. So that takes us to item six, closed session. And Christine, I'd like to thank you, Christina Cott, that we incorrectly cited our code. And so we will be, and I confirmed it, we will be tabling item six point one and ensuring it's correctly cited on the next agenda where we will address it. So with that item tabled, that takes us to item seven, which is our next meeting. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be Tuesday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two at 6:00 PM. And we will reach out if we do need a special meeting prior to that, based on the the tabled items from this meeting. And does anybody have any questions about that? Okay, hearing none. That takes us to item eight, an adjournment. And thank you all for a nice smooth meeting.
Thank you.
Ten o'clock at night here. So I am going to say goodnight and turn.
Night.
Night.
All right. Have a good night all.